Cameras on, we're missing one, one person into camera though.
Yeah Kevin.
Yeah, you're good.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order of the Henover Township Board, June the 4th, 2025, approximately 6:00 PM. I'll start with a prayer, Charlie, would you offer that please?
Blessed be, Holy Father, we just thank you again, Lord, for your unconditional love that you have for us. We thank you for Jesus and we especially thank you that he was willing to go to the cross for our sins. We just pray, Lord, we want to lift up our nation, our president, those that are elected in a, a national and a state level and economy level and here at a local level, Lord. It's just, we ask for your guidance, you know, help us to return to the foundation that we had when we started out as a country with you as the center, Lord. We just ask for that and just thank you for the healing that you've done in, in the lives of like Rich and Marie and Marilyn and, and just pray for your continued watch care over us. And we just ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Communalations please.
Communalations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you, are you taking notes Terry?
I am.
Beth?
Yes.
Would you be so kind as to call the roll for us please?
Richard Neiman?
Present.
Charles Correx.
Present.
Dr. Recker State, two of the three board members are present. Marilyn Kaefer is absent. Thus we have a quorum to conduct business. First order of business be the minutes of the previous meeting. We have copies of those in front of us. I'd like to take a moment to look those over. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as written? Any other questions from anyone? Entertain a motion for acceptance of the minutes.
I will make that motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I shall second it. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll get into our old business. The ambulance purchase here in 2025 is coming to fruition rather quickly. Kevin, would you enlighten us all on our rep?
Okay, the ambulance will be here on Tuesday, the 10th. Approximately around 10:00 AM, he said they'll drop it off, they will be here to deliver it. Everything's been done, they're just finishing up a little bit of the graphics on it, had to be, there was a couple spots they had to finish. But outside of that, everything's been installed. When it gets here, the rep from EV Plus will be here for the day with the fire department crews and go through the ambulance with them, so if they have any questions and that, he will show them how to operate everything there, how everything works, and then they can ask him any questions that they have and that, so. Everything's great, Rich and I went a couple of weeks ago to take a look at it, it's a very good looking unit. I think it's gonna work out very well for them, so. If you guys want to know the total cost. After we added in, there was a couple of things that were added on, like the refrigerator, the opticom system and that, the total is gonna be 358,575. So we will have a check for him when he gets here on Tuesday and then he'll give it to the fire department. So.
The breakdown of those monies are as listed here.
Yeah.
Forty thousand from the Fire EMS Fund, Acume Fire, fifty thousand. Our Public Safety, twenty thousand, and a remainder from the Rainy Day Fund. Just everybody knows that Rainy Day Fund comprises monies from everybody in the township. Whereas Acume Fire and the firefighting fund is strictly the unincorporated area. And the Public Safety is the county money, so. I thought it was well divided.
Yep.
Any questions from anyone? Any further discussion? As said, we're gonna move on to new business.
Rich, just one thing I forgot to touch on with you guys, I did talk to the attorney about the maintenance part.
Yes.
And basically because of, with the way the contract that we currently have has that maintenance section in it, I think it's section six or whatever it is, but anyway, I told him we're probably gonna end up grandfathering in the ambulance at the beginning and that what we'll have to do is rewrite the maintenance section for the new contract. And we'll do that in December. So we'll have to change that for that, so he thought we probably have the only thing we could do at this point, instead of having to try and get another separate maintenance agreement on the ambulance.
Oh, you mean for right now? Everything's under warranty right now though.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say. That's like a moot point.
Yeah, it is, and that's what I told him too, it makes no sense to even try to do that now. So let's wait for the contract and, and I told him that we need to, we want to rewrite that part.
For all of them.
And that we want, we want all the maintenance to go to them.
Yep.
So we'll see, you know, how that goes over, I, I think it'll be okay.
Oh yeah.
We'll work it out, but I know we, and we also discussed and I brought it up to Rich the other day, we were talking about what to do with the engine. And, and again, this is just my recommendation to you guys is I think might not be a bad idea to look to sell in the engine. Maybe selling it to the town and getting out of the fire engine business.
Oh yeah, I mean, I think that's been the general consensus, we're all in agreement, I think on that.
I just think with the, with the age of the truck now and that, it's gonna need to be refurbished or something, I mean, either that or it could serve as a good backup to them when they get their new unit in. They'd be crazy not to want to purchase it if we got a, I think we get a, you know, an estimate, an estimate price on it of what it's worth on the market kind of and see if they're interested, I, I think they'd be foolish not to.
Yeah, maybe negotiate that as a deduction from the contract.
Or we can even do that maybe.
Yep.
You know, maybe do something with the contract and say, here's the value of the engine, take it up the contract, you know. But I think that's something we should look into for the new contracts.
Sounds good.
You know, but it's up to you guys, I mean, you tell me what direction you want to go with that, cause I like to start working on the contract earlier this year so we get it in place before January and go from around February or whatever.
Right. Right.
But anyway, just some comments.
Okay.
Hey, any further discussion from anyone, any questions? That being said, we will move on to new business. Item number one, the Resolution 2025-3. It is for acceptance of payment by debit and credit cards. I am, read the first paragraph here. I'm not gonna go through the entire amount reading it. This is of the Henover Township Board of the Henover Township Trustees Office, Sierra Lake, Indiana. Authorizing acceptance of payments by debit and credit cards in collection of convenience fees. A copy of this resolution is here at the trustees' office. If anyone from public would like to have a copy of it, I'm sure we can get them one. It's broken down in different sections according to all the different possible uses of it. Authorizes us to get a convenience fee for doing so of 3% of the transaction. Is there anything, Terry, that you could add to, to what we're doing here to enlighten?
So, at the last state word of accounts meeting, it was brought up that we should have a policy for accepting creditor debit cards for payments. So typically we use it for payments of the rental facilities. So anyone that uses a creditor debit card does get a 3% convenience fee added to, to the cost of what they're purchasing from us. So it's just, it's just a policy just allowing our office to, to use the credit debit card for payment and charge the convenience fee of the 3%.
And the fee doesn't go to us, goes right to that company, so.
Right.
Any further discussion or questions? There's a lot of different things here, talk about credit card payments, accounts, convenience fee, policies and privacy, all these things will be taken care of according to the regulations. So we have Resolution number 2025-3 has been introduced. Is there a motion to adopt it as written?
I will make that motion to adopt as written.
I shall second it. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposition, motion carries. So it's on this day, the fourth day of June, 2025, this resolution was adopted. Fire Department Reports, item number 200, new business. I have one here from the town of Sierra Lake.
I didn't get the St. John one yet, usually a couple of days off, so.
Mary, did we give one the last meeting?
No.
St. John?
I don't think so.
Thought we did.
No, we didn't.
Huh? No? I know I had one. I'll have it for you guys at the next meeting, I know I had one. I think you only, the St. John one last month only had three calls on it, from what I remember.
Okay. Are there any questions from anyone concerning the calls that are listed?
You can see a couple of those calls, I don't know why they came in, as our calls, but there was a couple of standbys and stuff that.
I see one here from Iliana Christian, that's ours.
Yeah.
What?
There's a Lake Hills standby on there.
What would that be in, or is EMS, uncons if you would explain please?
Which one?
Unconscious?
Unconscious, okay.
Unconscious.
Down 21, okay. 521.
Somebody passed out or?
Uh, we have also a, a standby here for the Lake Hills Fire Department. And we have an, obviously an assistance to the dire fire department. So when we stand by for Lake Hills, where do they, where do they go? Stay right here?
Well, they, sometimes they stand by at their station, sometimes they go to the stations, I don't know which one they did.
Okay.
I'd have to, I'd have to get that information from Nick, I don't know. I think it depends on the call and how many people they have, if they're, if their one unit is out, then they usually don't let the other one go out of town. They'll stand, they'll be on standby here, I don't know which way.
Okay. Does anyone have any other comments or questions?
Just a couple, I'm gonna kick a couple of things out there real quick just so you guys could think it over, not for tonight so much, but. I did get some preliminary, preliminary information about the Senate Bill 1 and some of the repercussions of it as far as our budget. These are very early numbers and some baseline estimates, whatever they want to call, but they, I mean, unless they make some changes and stuff they're talking about, we could probably lose about seventy thousand dollars out of our budget.
Third year.
First year.
First year.
It's showing almost, if these numbers are correct, I mean, you're talking about by twenty eight, ninety thousand.
So we lose seventy and they gain seventy.
I don't know who gains it because if the way they're talking, well, with the other taxes going up that they're gonna have, you know, to offset some of this stuff, I don't know who gains.
Well.
I mean.
It's not gonna be a refund to the taxpayers, so the states.
I know, but it's because they lowered, well, your, your refund is supposedly gonna be your property tax relief that you're gonna get, which is a whole three hundred bucks. But I don't, these numbers were just preliminary estimates, I, and we haven't heard anything as far as from, from like the DLGF or anything about what, what we should use, numbers we should use or anything like that, I'm just saying, this is kind of a, I mean, I gotta rough this sheet from, I mean, everybody. It's pretty huge. If, if it stays this way, but I have been told that some of this is quite possibly gonna change. Or there might be some adjustments made to it, so I'm not sure, but I'm just letting you know where it's at, because we, and we do have to still set up the road fund. So we'll have to do that for the new budget too. And part of all of that is gonna be a setting up a capital improvement plan. We're gonna need that capital improvement plan to justify any of our excess funds to try to keep them from being forced into the road fund, so. I guess my question for you guys would be is, in putting together a capital improvement plan, I've, I mean, we've had one for a while, but a lot of the stuff has been done, like we've, we've made the, replaced it or fixed it or repaired it or moved, so. We do have a few things outstanding, like I, I've always had the HVAC system on there for the rooftop and unit, unit replacement, that's pretty expensive, probably, you know, twenty five grand or something if we had to go that route. So I got that in there, I've got the roof replacement for this office, which will probably, I'm guessing the next five years, we're gonna probably need to maybe put a roof on this building. So, and I'm, that's probably ballparking around forty five thousand, so I've got that all in.
Figured it out.
The capital improvement plan, I got a few other things like just doing some stuff in the back. But I didn't know, my thought was also to put an ambulance replacement for six or seven or eight years down the road and, and a tanker for twelve or fifteen. To just put it in the capital improvement plan now so we can say, okay, this is what we're looking at, that this is why we're saving this money. So, but that's, again, the route, you guys want to go with it if we, you know, I think staying in the ambulance buying is, it could be good for us, stay out of the engine buying, and the tanker's not a bad investment either because it's a long-term investment, I mean, you probably don't need one for twenty years. And everything, and it's not as expensive as buying an engine. I mean, there are things that I think we could do.
And we could still set aside money under capital improvement or any kind of changes we want to make out in Brunswick to the building or purchasing land for a ambulance or something for future use out there.
Yeah.
We could budget that now though.
Well, we can, yeah, we can put it in our plan, that this is what we're looking at, that's why we have this money set aside. So that'll, that'll also help us to justify the reason why we have these funds. Which we just, we just basically got rid of most of our Rainy Day though, which is one of those, the ones that they can capture.
Right.
The Fire Acume, they can't, so those funds are, are safe.
Right.
So. But I just wanted to know a direction from you guys on what do you, what do you think we should do as far as that? I mean, do you feel comfortable with that being part of the capital improvement plan or? Just so we have some guidance and some direction for the future.
Yep.
I think the items that you mentioned, Monta Facility here, that's a flat roof, just a matter of time.
Oh yeah, it's.
As far as the ACs up there, I have no idea when they were put in.
We were trying to figure that one out.
Two thousand and ten.
That's what's probably still, the county probably still had possession of this at that point.
I think, I, I, if I remember correctly, I believe it was in two thousand and ten, cause the, we had already had the building and the county actually
They grant?
Incorporated us in a energy grant.
Okay.
That they had gotten to be able to do some of the repairs that needed to be done to this building. So I believe it was two thousand and ten. If you're looking at its fifteen years old already.
It was when I started, it was when I started, yeah.
Yeah, which was two thousand and ten, right?
And we have a regular maintenance contract, that comes twice a year, they change the filter, the gold, everything and all that stuff, so. You know, he's, he said we're fine right now, that there, you know, he didn't see anything wrong with the unit or anything, but I still, I've got it out for about ten years now. That, that thing will probably be, you know, couldn't need replacement.
Right, oh yeah.
So, but the flat roof, the roof I did have looked at last year and we did some maintenance on it, had them go up there and seal some stuff and all that, and they, I actually had three different companies out and they all kind of said the same thing about five years, five more years. So, I mean, we are.
And that was originally put in in two thousand and ten too.
Okay.
So. So like I said, I thought those were the big items and I thought that was.
The roof on the school and Brunswick I think is not that old.
Last year we did it, yep. That's a pressure.
That should be good for maybe twenty years.
The roof, the, the air conditioner, the heating air was planted two years ago, so I mean, all that stuff is good there, so we're, you know, we're all, we're caught up on a lot of this stuff and that's what I thought it'd be a good time for maybe we start looking into looking forward for like I said, maybe six or eight years, maybe the ambulance needs to be rotated out and get another one or something. At that, around that point, I mean, it makes sense, so. Whatever we can do.
And set money aside for that.
Yep.
The tanker truck doesn't go out, I recall, does it?
No. No, the tanker should be fine.
I think it's an important piece of equipment for the unincorporated area considering we don't have any water supply.
Oh no, it's important for half the town.
I mean now, yeah, for half the town here, I mean, you have it down by one hundred and nineteenth and Cayman Avenue, that's, that's it per water. Rest of that is all your own supply. With the well at my, my parents' house, seventy five years old, so. I don't know. I think those are some good items to put in that plan. Far as the Senate Bill 1 goes. I don't know, I haven't spoken to anybody specifically about it, but as far as any drastic changes to it, I don't see it. Basically what they did was put a handful of dice and shook them up, threw them out, still got the same number. I mean, still gonna have.
Snake eyes, that's what we got, snake eyes.
And just, it's a matter of a property tax. It was a method that maybe was not perfect in my estimation, but it sure worked for a long, long time. Maybe needed a couple tweaks here or there, but we really rolled the ball down the alley on this one. So municipalities, of course, will have the opportunity and they will absolutely have to enact a local income tax. We'll see who has the intestinal fortitude to do that and the political will besides. That's where it's going.
Anyway, if you guys are good with some of that, I'll, we're not putting that together, you know, presented.
I, I would be nice if we could get a, maybe from our Township Association, kind of like a set of cliff notes on these bills. Something where it'd be condensed, give you a general idea without getting in all the wheres and whos and all that stuff to see what we're really faced with.
We do have an ITA meeting on the twenty third of June and they're hoping that the Department of Local Government Finance will be there.
Got, I mean, those are things that, you know, we hear this from different people and a lot of speculation, but, you know.
Yeah, we got that meeting coming up on the twenty third and then there's a few other Zoom meetings that they're gonna have on it as soon as they get it all understood. So I think they're still working on that part, so.
Gonna make it taste better.
Yeah, well.
It's never gonna taste better when it's all this taxes.
No, well, but we, we can only do what we can do, so it'll be interesting to see what it all really means, cause at this point it's really hard to understand what it means. Oh, but I did.
So they got it right.
But I did get good news, I was, I did submit for the load funds or the agent money that we get every year and I was told that, don't worry about that, nothing's gonna change in that, we're fine, that it'll be the same as it was before.
That'll be brought up to the County Council on the tenth as well.
Supposed to, I looked at their agenda today, it wasn't on there, I was gonna call them tomorrow and find out if it's gonna be on there or not, but the applications and they've got.
I was told it would be on there, so.
I was too, but it's not, it wasn't on the written agenda, but they've got until August I believe, or September first to approve it, so.
But that particular part will be really important to us.
Yeah.
In the years to come. Unless the General Assembly changes and makes it a part of the formula. Which they've resisted doing that.
So, we'll see, it'll be interesting.
Any other discussion about fire department reports or anything else? I'm sure everybody's aware of the Convention Center was approved to go to Gary. Lake County Commissioners. State of Indiana, which I was not aware of, you read over how that's gonna be funded. And the mayor of Gary was a state senator, him and Earl Rogers got through. Obviously was a twenty year abatement or something, I'm at order on the original construction of the Hard Rock Casino. That is over. There is a gaming tax that goes to the State of Indiana, to that particular bureau. State of Indiana legally, they have committed five million per year for ten years, I believe it is, for whatever they gotta do with it. Hard Rock, that's only if the entities like the Hard Rock Cafe and the City of Gary can match those funds. So it'd be a tune of ten million to get your funding. My question I have about that is all I hear about is City of Gary and their financial woes and in particular about education. I didn't see one, any of that involved in education. There is another case in my opinion, where we're gonna take this money and right from, we're gonna give it right back to them. I don't get it, okay. My personal opinion is if you're a casino and you're making a lot of money, hey bless your heart, it won't be a penny of mine. And you're out to invest your own money. This whole project's gonna be three hundred million dollars by the time they're done. So, that's something to keep your eyes on. I don't know what Gary will do. There's something also with the charter schools, the debt idea of the tax money following the student, is that a part of any of those?
Oh, I thought that was a done deal.
Well, you know, the, the money they use, the ADA money.
Right.
Okay, then, you know, that's, that's a voucher.
Right.
But there was a part also that would allow the tax money.
Right, to follow.
To follow that student as well.
I thought that was a done deal.
I'm not sure, that's why I'm asking.
Haven't seen that part of it, I don't know.
I do know there are people involved at Iliana Christian that don't really want that because they can't take care of all the students they have applications for now. I was told by a neighbor, they're actually looking into looking, buying the old Baptist.
Yes.
School.
Adventist, Adventist.
Yeah. Because of all the students that are made application.
Right.
To be a part of Iliana Christian, so I don't know where that's at, but. I mean, they, you know.
Well.
The money's following them possibly.
Again, they're not the only game in town.
No.
That's, that, that, yeah, that is out there, so.
Now what has, has happened, for instance, like in Gary, if, you know, a kid gets a voucher, but you gotta come up with the rest of the money for your tuition. A young lady that's a teacher over at, what's the one on Summit Street, Timothy Ball?
Yeah.
They're busing these kids in out of Gary because going to public school, you can't turn down. But a charter school, if you can't come up with above and beyond what. But a charter school, if you can't come up with above and beyond what the voucher is for, tough luck. So, there are just things, and will it affect us directly? Nope. But I think it is things that are of concern for myself. I don't have any kids in school, still a taxpayer.
Yeah, and And those residential tips that they came up with on the state and are not helping our school district or us out either.
I feel as though that public school is at a very dire point in the road.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, really. I don't, I mean, we all here, I know I, I believe everybody here graduated from public school. That's all I ever went to. I have nothing against parochial schools or anything of the sort. That's what we get.
Well, these.
Very concerning.
These estimates that I was talking about earlier show Hanover Schools losing one point five million dollars.
You know where they're going next.
There'll be a referendum. So, yeah, so you're going to pay for it either way. So.
City of Hammond right now.
Well, it's only so much in the pot. I mean.
Oh, was it a year or so ago, a school, City of Hammond voted their referendum down. They're, they're going to experience somewhere, I can't remember what I read, like twenty million dollars in the hole here on this thing.
Welcome to Illinois.
With, with money they're putting in this Hard Rock, and they got that casino up in North Hammond. I, I don't know what it is. You probably know where it's at, Kevin.
Yeah, the Lakefront, the one up in the.
Yeah, they're, they're all squawking there. I guess bottom line is we as elected officials here in township government, we're going to have to be very aware of what we spend and how we spend it. Because the, the knot is going to get tightened. Okay. I think we've done a great job. That's how you're able to do what we just did. And I'm not ashamed to say that. So.
Yeah, but they're going to make it more difficult to do it, to be responsible.
Yeah, so we're going to have to really be, be on our toes. So.
Yeah, so a new concept, reduce services.
Yes.
Reduce services, reduce your budgets.
It's going to be interesting.
Reduce head counts.
Anyway, any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Motion's been made. I Charlie Carter Cracks, I will second it. All those in favor say aye.